Eight AM, I'd like to call the Brimfield Township Board of Trustees Special Meeting to order. A roll call for attendance, please.
Call the attendance mic.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
And the full board.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of prayer or silent meditation. Thank you. All right, we are here for the Brimfield Township Special Meeting. We are moving to our announcements and correspondences. First, before we begin, I want to remind public if you are here and you would like to speak during the public comments section, there is a sign in by the door there. Please make sure you sign in and then we'll read out your name and do those in order as people signed in. Secondly, I want to thank the residents of Brimfield Township and the neighboring areas for being here today. I'd like to thank the board for being here on a special meeting and thank Holly for her work to get this meeting put together for us. And lastly, thank you to our department heads who have been working on this conversation for the past several weeks. A couple important notes. First, today is about gathering facts, allowing everyone to be on the same page and allowing for what we call transparent government. This is how government works and this is the greatest part about townships and township government is that we are all residents, we are all neighbors, we are all friends, and we can work together. When looking at financial changes and impacts, emotions can run high, but we are all here with the same mission. That mission is keeping, keep making Brimfield a great community while staying fiscally sound. Respect is important during this meeting. Everyone has ideas and wants to be heard, and I agree, you should be heard. So let's actively listen, and actively listen means not just to be here in attendance, but hear what people have to say and work together to achieve an agreeable goal. Government work is hard. It is a thankless job at times and many of our department heads can attest to that. But the fruits of our labor is a nation of freedom and a nation of neighbors loving neighbors. So let's keep that in mind today. And lastly, tough questions may be asked throughout the day, but it's not about placing blame, it's not about fighting, it's just about gathering facts so that the board can continue to make informed decisions moving forward. Please keep that in mind. With that said, is there any other announcements or correspondences this morning? All right, hearing none, we will first move into our public comments and questions. We want to remind the speakers that you need to state your name prior to speaking for the meeting minutes, and we do have a three-minute limit. It's also important to note that we just gather comments from the public during this time. We will not respond back, it's for us to gather and then we can talk about during the meeting. With that said, I'll start at the top of the list. First up is Bill Anderson. And we do ask that you come up to the podium to speak, just because it'll make it easier for everybody to hear.
My name's Bill Anderson, I'm a resident of Brimfield. I attend most all meetings at the township, so I am well informed what's going on. And I'll start it by saying, how did we get to this place? A year and a half ago, after reading the financial reports, I had a conversation with trustees and fiscal officer about cost overruns at the fire department and whether we had enough money in reserve to cover those costs. It did not appear to me that we did, but I was told we had plenty of money. Since that time, we bought a library building, refurbished it, and now maintain the building and grounds. The library does not pay rent nor utilities. Then the soccer field was refurbished, a parking lot was put in, followed by acreage bought by, for expansion of a cemetery. All of these apparently used, all of these apparently using the CARES Act funds were made possible by the federal government to cover costs associated with COVID. Those funds should have been used to cover the fire department cost overruns due to COVID, but they were not. Now we're facing a financial dilemma. This board was aware of the cost, but did nothing to prepare for it. We are one of the largest townships in Ohio. Most townships are small with a budget between one and two million dollars per year. Brimfield is around fifteen million dollars, growing larger every year. We need to have an accountant on staff, but the Ohio Revised Code only requires a fiscal officer with no degree in finance. If we had an accountant, they would have told the trustees, you cannot spend that kind of money with cost overruns looming in the near future. Now here we are, it's time for a change.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next up will be Tom Searle.
Hi, everybody. I thought it was society, so I don't know anything to say.
Oh, okay. That's okay, appreciate it. All right, next on the list, Patty Harjung.
Hello, I'm Patty Harjung. I've been a Brimfield resident since 1988. I was a Brimfield Township employee at the police department from 1990 to 2023 when I retired. And I first of all want to compliment the Board of Trustees and all of the township employees for building this building. This building is fantastic. What we had before was totally out of control. It was in very, very bad shape. And I know that all of you worked very hard for this building and I want to thank you for your endeavors to do that. But it is my understanding that there is a need for eight hundred thousand dollars to cover overruns for whatever reason, and I do believe that we should not take any funding from emergency services. We need our life-saving emergency services for the police department, the fire department, and the road crew. Those are the essential services for Brimfield Township that is absolutely necessary for the well-being of our residents. I do believe that it is possible to cut expenditures in other areas of the administration and to save some money and possibly come up with some of that funding. And I also believe that it is possible that some property that is owned by Brimfield Township could be sold. And maybe there's equipment that has not been utilized recently that could also be sold. So there are other fundraising activities that could be done without harming our emergency services. I also believe that in the 1960s, when our fire department was first built, I've talked to some of the older residents over the years, they had multiple fundraising events to pay for things. And some of the fundraising events even included volunteers and fire department personnel going door-to-door to households and asking for donations. They had fish fries on Friday nights, they had pancake breakfast, they did multiple things to raise money. Now, I do know that if we had four thousand people, and that sounds like a large number, but if, in the long run, if you think about the number of Brimfield residents we have in the businesses, if each of the four thousand people donated one hundred dollars apiece, that would come up with four hundred thousand dollars. So that way, the Board of Trustees and department heads could come up with the other four hundred thousand dollars. I think that with citizen volunteers, we could certainly make an effort to raise the other four hundred thousand dollars. I appreciate, again, what all the employees here are doing. Thank you very much for your service. I know that you all work very hard and I am very proud of this building and I hope that all of the other residents in our township are equally as proud of the new town hall and the new fire department. It is absolutely beautiful, it is absolutely needed and necessary. Thank you very much and have, everybody have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list will be Tom Johnson.
Good morning. I'm here speaking as a resident of Brimfield Township. I'm speaking for myself and representing and commenting for myself. It's very easy to stand behind the mic and toss verbal stones. I'm going to do my best to refrain from doing so this morning. First, I'd like to comment on the Auditor of State report titled Management Letter. This letter here can only, this letter here can only be characterized as a dumpster fire. We can do better as a community and the community deserves better. Okay, moving on to today's meeting. I would like to thank the Township Fiscal Officer, Mr. Danzell, for taking a meeting with me ten days ago to discuss the township financial status and also discussing, I'd like to thank him for the phone call that we had last Thursday. During these interactions with the Brimfield Township Fiscal Officer, I have been able to develop an understanding of the financial challenges facing the township's administrative budget. I would like to bring to your attention the comments that were posted on Facebook in response to the administrative budget difficulties, and I'm going to quote, let me be clear, "I do not and I will not support any proposal that cuts funding to police, fire, EMS, or road services. These departments are essential to the safety and function of our community. They will remain in full operation, at least with my vote. I'm one of three trustees, but this is my firm position." End of quote. No one would disagree that these departments are not essential and valuable assets to our community, but at times compromise needs to be made. Mr. Koya, these are your comments. If you're that firm in your position, very little will be accomplished today. It's very clear that only viable options is a compromise of cost sharing from each department to facilitate fiscal solvency in the administrative budget. And that can be found on page three of the letter to the Brimfield residents that was passed out this morning. The administrative budget covers salaries and miscellaneous expenses of the township. Who do you suggest, Mr. Koya, does not receive their salary? Or what utility expenses should not be paid from the administrative budget? Any adjustments made to the department should be made in a way that minimize the operational effectiveness of the department. In closing, it appears two solutions are available. An internal solution with cost sharing of the JED monies from each department, or, Mr. Koya, a hard-line, no-compromise position which only could reach to one conclusion, a third conclusion, a new tax, tax monies to resolve the issue. Yes, a new administrative budget levy, Mr. Koya, it appears that, to this speaker, this is the only solution you are presenting from your Facebook post. Brimfield Township has faced other financial difficulties in the past. We've come together as a strong community to find solutions to those problems. This problem will be no different.
Thank you for your comments today. All right, we'll call for one last comment for public comments. Anybody else, anybody else on the issue? Uh, we have you sign in first and then come up next.
You can do it up here.
You can do it right up here. I'm sorry, I have a write-up on.
Where?
Right here.
There.
It's okay. Thank you.
She made your name in that address.
Five five one Sandy Lake Road, Kent, Ohio. Um, I was here a couple of years ago at a, at a meeting for the fire department because I didn't see anybody working on it for, I don't know, a long time. So I questioned, who was the liaison at the time of the fire department? Doesn't the liaison check on the budget and the construction and aren't you the liaison to make things go smoothly? And I don't agree that all these rising costs are in 2025? I don't understand that. Um, we, when you have a contract with anyone and you set a contract and the price is this, like anybody, you have to stay within that budget. There is overruns, I have built, I get it, but this is astronomical. We pay, I was told it was seven million dollars for the fire department. I read now it's eight point nine and we need another eight hundred thousand. That's a lot of money. How did we get here? Who was supposed to be babysitting? Is it the liaison? Is it the trustees? Is it the fiscal officer that comes and say, hey, man, we don't have the money? Two years ago, instead of waiting until, this is all out of control. I don't get it. You don't have to have a degree. I don't have a degree to do my checkbook. I know where the money is. So where is the contract with RICON? That is what I want. Where all the money is supposed to be spent, the budget, any overrun cost, and you can't sit there and blame it because of COVID only. And you can't sit there and blame it on, well, we had a different manager, a different manager, a different general contractor. Why? Normally you have one general contractor. That's the man. But who was in charge of that man when the fire department was being built? And I'd like to know, are we really, are we done? Have we signed off on this fire department? I mean, is the contract over? And then I heard that because the RICON and all that fiasco, we had to hire a lawyer. And then they're supposed to pay us money back. Where is that money? I heard a thousand dollars a day. Where did that money go? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this morning. Anybody else here to speak this morning? All right, hearing none, we'll move into the business portion of our meeting under Budget Adjustments and General Fund.
Hey, Nick.
Yes.
He needs her name.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's right here, it's Bridget.
Bridget.
Got it?
Yep.
We'll pass on it. I should pass it down. We are now into the business portion of our meeting where we will be discussing budget adjustments and the general fund. So John, I guess I'll turn it over to you for an update and then we'll have a discussion on the floor.
Sure, thanks. Thank you all for coming today, I'm glad you're all here. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at the letter and put it on Facebook so everybody could take a look at it, just to kind of explain where the situation is, kind of stomp out any of the rumors that you may hear on the street or maybe any of the falsities that may be out there. But what this is, this meeting is about a overrun on a fire admin building, is what it is. It caused the downfall of the general fund and other issues that had to pay for some of those overruns as we were going along. The project did go on for multiple, multiple months afterwards, I'm not even, I don't even know how many to add up after that, it's almost a couple of years that it took longer to do that. The original project was the eight point five million dollars. There was a dollar amount out there that's thrown on the table of eight hundred thousand dollars, that's not a, not a final number by any means. That number is up for negotiation with the contractor, with the architect, and with QCI, who is our Quality Assurance Company that worked with the project. So we did have multiple changes. I know somebody asked about the, the contract people that were running over there and the department heads. Those were replaced by RICON, five different people, five different project managers throughout, they had nothing to do with Brimfield, they replaced their own project manager. RICON and Moody Nolan, who was our architect, had multiple issues along the way, multiple disagreements, multiple overruns that they both fought over, hell, there were even days that they were fighting over the weather and how much we should have paid for rainy days versus not pay for rainy days. There were all kinds of different things that are out there. I will say this, I will say that everybody on this board and everybody that was involved with this project could not have caused that or solved that issue while it was happening. Those were things that were behind our control. I know I didn't create the cost of steel upgrade or increases or the cost of lumber, concrete, or even, hell, eggs, I didn't have anything to do with that and none of them on this board did either. Those costs rose through the roof, that building cost more money than it was expected to be cost. If we would have known that ahead of time, we probably would have changed how we did things, but I didn't know. And I'm sure if anybody in this room thought they knew, I don't know if they knew to what extent that would be. So where we are right now is we're trying to figure out a way to go out, figure out what that final number's going to be, we do not even know. And I even had a talk with Craig, Chief Malali, before the meeting to see if he had heard anything from anybody else yet. We don't know the number yet from QCI, Moody Nolan, and RICON. The max would be eight hundred thousand, we don't think it's going to be anywhere near that, but we don't even know the number for that yet. So I don't know if those people wouldn't have been able to figure that out, I don't know how we would have been able to figure it out. They're the ones that run the project over there all day long. So that's where we are with that. What we're here today, in my opinion, to discuss is how do we go forward in making sure that we, we are able to fund those shortages that affect the fire department admin building as well? So none of those overages are, are just at the fire department or just at the admin building, they were split totally differently between both the buildings, they had multiple overages. There were a couple of options that I gave to the board today on things that we could do. One of them, and somebody threw this out here, was removal of staff at the admin building. That, well, that's an option, yeah, that's an option. Changing JED contributions, we give thirty percent to all three departments right now. That was put together multiple years ago so that we could help fund them without putting taxes on the employee or the residents of Brimfield Township. The general fund gets ten percent of that. So one of the thoughts was to make it even across the board, twenty-five percent for everybody. But.
Can I explain the JED real quick? Okay, even though I still feel like a young guy, I started here twenty-three plus years ago. Chick and I were together and we all formed, and Sue, we formed that JED because half of you guys are too young to even know, but Brimfield was on the cusp of being absorbed by Talmadge and, Talmadge and Kent. So, now you, don't get bored with me, but I'm telling you the facts. So I had the opportunity, Kent went and talked to us, all they wanted was Kent. And you, you, every one of you should know what property is Kent now, what used to be Brimfield. So I tried to talk to Lou Steinbrenner, I got nowhere with him from Kent, so I moved on and I was working at the restaurant and I had, I had, the guy said, there's a mayor from Talmadge sitting out there. So I went out there, he had a huge beer in front of him, I knew I could talk to this guy. So we actually formed the JEDs, which saved the township for another, it was a two-hundred-year period. But the one thing, we created these M and I's and it's, I did this because Talmadge wanted to look like they had, were getting the lion's share of the JED revenue, which would have been fifty-five percent and Kent would get, or Brimfield would get forty-five. So we created a maintenance and improvement fund. This fund is managed by John. At the time, I realized how short our PD was, our fire department was, and our road department. We had no money, other than to go to you guys. And back then, I don't know how many people we had, maybe eight thousand? So what we did at the time, I guess I should have thought more about it, I should not have given thirty percent to the police, I should not have given thirty percent to fire, I should not have given thirty percent to roads. It should have been an even split because back then, Chick, you knew, we hardly had anybody in administration. Ten percent was more than enough to handle that. Things have changed. Our, our officers, we want to pay them more because they're in a tough position. But the thing is, people going after John, all these damn keyboard junkies that probably half of them don't even vote, are causing all this stuff. You guys don't realize the crap that goes into redoing this. We heard from a lot of people that they wanted to keep part of old Brimfield together, so we kept the original station down there. Well, who knew that it was going to be full of asbestos? What, ninety thousand dollars later? Okay, so then, the fire department. We had curtains up there for their rooms. Well, apparently the firefighters wanted wooden doors. We put in wooden doors, you know what that did? That stopped the extra thousand dollars a day we were getting from RICON. It has cost us for those doors, on stuff we lost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars because we didn't do them afterwards. So there's been a lot of blunders and it's not just this board. You guys have to look at this stuff. I mean, look at some of the stuff we got in there. I mean, that is an A1 facility, so.
Well, let me, let me cut you in here, and I don't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. Um, one of the things that we've done in the past, and I know that you can ask Craig Malali, you can ask Chris Hattins, they were here at times at the fire and police department, there were multiple times throughout Brimfield Township, this is not the only time that we've had shortages in different categories. The fire department was broke, the police department was broke, the general fund actually went out and helped that so that nobody had to get their, you know, jobs cut or anything like that. Nobody even knew that was going on, but it happened internally all the time. What we did a couple of years ago, though, maybe five or six years ago, because the police and fire were in their bad situation that they were in, the general fund, we took all the administrative costs from them and took them into the general fund. Their electric bill, their copier bills, their cleaning bills, anything that was incurred by those departments there, the general fund took those over. We paid all those. We never went back to those departments and said, hey, we need that money back. What we have been doing, because now the, the tides have changed, and I tell you again, they'll change eventually, they'll always go back up and down, you guys are wealthier than the general fund is now. So all we're asking in some of those situations, is to start paying your own bills. So a lot of those things are being pushed back onto the departments. That's not coming and saying, hey, we're taking anything away from police or fire, and that was making you pay your own bills because we can't afford to keep paying them. So some of the things that we've talked about as well is that there are admin people that actually work for those departments, that's the third option that's out there. Our administrative staff, the board that's up here, our IT guy, they all work for these departments, but the general fund pays all those expenses. So I'm not sure that how we figured it out, but maybe we break it up between everybody else and say, everybody gets to pay twenty-five percent of those costs because everybody gets to use them. That makes a huge difference. If we did not have the overruns on that building over there, we'd be in total, we'd be okay. We wouldn't be rich by any means, but we would be okay. But we did have those overruns, so that's kind of where we are. I just want everybody to understand, try to make it, you explain it as well as I could, I know some of you guys didn't want it, but it's all on this letter, I tried to do the best I could do. I've worked for Brimfield Township for nineteen years, so this has happened pretty much every year.
Yeah, we just got to clear the air. We, we appreciate every one of our safety forces and all of our road departments, we appreciate all the departments. The last thing I want to do is cut from any of these forces. I mean, but we have to work together, for the common good. I mean, we're here to represent Brimfield, so it's all I got.
All right. All right, I guess I can start with questions then so we can have this discussion about the options which fiscal officers provided to the board trustees. So John, it looks like we have three options that you proposed for, for changes, and then I'll get into some questions. The first is the JED redispersment, going from thirty, 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 ten to twenty-fives across the board, correct?
That's what, yep.
Okay, and that would generate in the general fund an additional estimated two hundred and six thousand? And is that for this fiscal year or is that two hundred and six thousand estimate for 2026 and only fifty percent for this year?
That's an annual amount, so.
So this year would be roughly a hundred and three?
Right.
Okay.
But in some time, wasn't there a talk that we're only going to do it for?
Yeah, that has been brought up too between the department heads and we might only do it for a year and a half until things get solved back around and then we switch it back. We switch things all the time. We, we, we share costs back and forth as they're needed, that's what we do, to make sure that all the budgets stay, stay above ground. I guess that is the first option.
Well, Nick, since we're, since we're working, we're talking, this is a business meeting.
Yeah, I was just going to try to get through the cost.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, this was something in reference to the JED that I wanted to add.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, remember, I said, I think I've talked to most department heads. I'm just using crazy numbers, you know, just easy, so everyone understands. So the 2025 JED, so let's say all our PD got a hundred dollars, all our departments got their hundred bucks, okay? So, so what I'm saying is to make it, so we don't decrease anything from the departments, let's lock in that amount of money from the JEDs for 2026. We all know the JEDs are going to increase immensely. So, so, so Roy and Craig and Dave, they'd still get their hundred dollars, but say, with the increase in the JED revenue goes up to a hundred and twenty dollars, the general fund would take that extra twenty thousand for a year, a year and a half, to help, you know, build the, the JED back up, build the general fund back up. So they're still getting the money they budgeted for, for 2025, they would get that money for 2026. That's just one of my thoughts when I couldn't sleep at night, trying to worry, worrying about this, but.
I was up till midnight last night.
Just to add to that point there, there is an M and I fund that's out there that Mike talked to about earlier. Out of that fifty-five percent that Talmadge or Kent gets and the forty-five percent that Brimfield gets, both of us take five percent of that and put it into what's called a maintenance and improvement fund. So that would leave Talmadge and Kent with fifty percent, Brimfield with forty percent, and then the ten percent of the M and I would be controlled by Brimfield Township. What we have been doing over the, well, with the Talmadge JED, because the JED doesn't have a lot of money in it, but the Talmadge JED, we have been buying police cruisers, multiple police cruisers every year.
That's eighty-five thousand bucks, right?
That was this year, yeah. We bought cruisers, we bought EMS equipment, we bought dump trucks, we bought all kinds of things. Not one dime of that's been spent on buying anything for the general fund in regards to that. We did have some expenses that someone brought out there earlier, I believe it was a bill maybe. Some of those funds that we did buy that looked like they were admin costs, those were all by the CARES Act that were all out there to get people out of the house. They weren't out there to, to put buildings or go with shortages or pay payroll, it was to get people out of the house after COVID. That's why we built the library. We have the ability to do that.
If we didn't spend it, it went to another community.
Correct. We built the soccer field, get people out, we put parking lots over there so they didn't have to park in other people's, you know, parking spot. We had, we had to do a lot of that stuff, but that was all with CARES Act money. That wasn't out of Brimfield Township money at all. But the M and I dollars that are out there, we spend that on all three of the departments. Every, multiple times, I'm sure you could ask your department head to show what you've gotten out of the M and I over the last five or six years, you might be surprised, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I added these numbers, I just, just to give these guys a quick overview, unless I added them wrong, the police right now in their budget has two million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. The fire department has four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred The fire department has four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The road department has eight hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, I just, and remember, we get our next cut in what, July?
Beginning of July.
Yeah, so we still get the second half of our taxes, and we will be getting our next Jed revenue right about July, too, right?
Yep, beginning of July is when we get it.
Right, and I mean, we're going to see a significant bump in our Jed from Kent, because when we did the Kent Jed, all up and down forty-three, we made that Jed, the Jed area goes back twelve hundred feet. So, all of those buildings coming, buildings and everything on forty-three up to Talmadge Road are all part of the Kent Jed. And you guys see the, all the growth that's going, and now there's talk of possibly, I know a lot of people don't want to hear this, but a big box store. So, I mean, it's all, as much as we hate all this stuff, I hate levying taxes on anybody else. I mean, I know it's tough out there, right? We all know it.
A lot about those things too, and I'll just step in on that, with the zoning in Brimfield, there's three sets of zoning. There's commercial, there's residential, and there's industrial. Everywhere in Brimfield Township has a zoning. So, if somebody wants to sell their property to someone to build a building like that, that fits the zoning in there, there's nothing that Brimfield Township can do about that. If there's a, I know there was people complaining about the new housing behind the school, they were coming and saying that the fire, or the fields of, or the farmland was being taken away. Those, some of those comments were coming from people that lived in Chapman Farms, which was a farm as well. But, those things, we can't stop Joe Blow from selling his property. If somebody in this room owned a piece of property in Brimfield, and someone said, I'm going to give you ten million bucks, and I'm going to build a box store there, what would we do? We couldn't tell you no, we can't tell you if it fits into what the zoning is for that, that area, there's nothing that Brimfield can do about it. So, if people have a hard time with Brimfield's growth, it doesn't really have a lot with the board, we can't really stop any of that, so...
Okay.
Go ahead, Nick. That's okay, I just want to get us to that central point of like what the options are.
Sure, go ahead.
So, the first option was the Jed, just transparency with that, right now, police, fire, and roads get about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year at the thirty, thirty, thirty split. If we were to change that to the twenty-five percent split, police, fire, and roads would get three hundred and forty-three thousand apiece, looking at a potential reduction to their budget by sixty-eight thousand, and an increase to general fund by two hundred and six. Option two, that was on the floor, or that was sent to us, is staff payroll, pay reorganization. So, we would take the pay for the fiscal officer, the three trustees, the IT person, and the fiscal assistant, and split that up twenty-five percent between police, fire, roads, and general fund. That would have a cost of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars to police, fire, and roads. General fund would reduce the cost from three hundred and eighty-three to ninety-five thousand, netting a fund balance difference of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And then that, that's option two. Option three that existed out there was looking at pay elimination, and looking at the salaries of different individuals, and what we could do to settle the construction costs.
And Nick, those salaries are total benefits, total wages.
Total benefits, correct.
All right.
There was, well, we'll get to that later. So, and then the fourth option that just came up, but I don't have any numbers for, is what Mike just spoke about, of locking in the twenty-twenty-five rate and going forward with the general fund. So, that would take the police, fire, roads, general fund, police, fire, and roads would lock in at four hundred and twelve thousand, and increase to Jed dollars in twenty-twenty-six would just be diverted to general fund.
Possibly twenty-twenty-seven.
Possibly twenty-seven. Those are the options that exist there. So, you had some things you wanted to say, and then I'll kind of get into some of my questions.
Okay, I just want to take a couple of minutes here, I'm Sue Fields. And when I moved there to Brimfield in eighty-six, we had seventy-two hundred residents. We now have a little over fourteen thousand. Our staff of the township, right now, we have, what, seventy-two employees with all the departments. I just want to share with you how much we have grown, and what our board has tried to do. We wanted to keep all of our, our growth down at the interstate, and not bring it up into the residential. Right now, we have developed less than five percent of the total amount of Brimfield. So, we aren't going really crazy with it, but what we have got is, one of my goals for the whole twenty-eight years that I've been here, is our schools are excellent, my taxes show that. And so, what we have is our good schools, people want to move here, we're centrally located, we're in a great spot. And one of my goals was to have Brimfield be able to support our children not leaving home and not coming back. So, to do that, we have to have good jobs, good-paying jobs, and we also have to have places for this influx, so they can live. I don't want to live in Youngstown and drive here every day to go to work. I want to go a mile and a half and be at, be at my shop where I'm working. So, I'm really pleased to see that we are moving along, and we're trying to protect our people, and still trying to keep so that we don't keep increasing the taxes that we have to pay on our property. So, I just wanted to share that with you. We're growing, we still have more growth, but we are trying to keep it all confined, so that we can still have a good community here. Thank you.
Okay, John, just because we're here to work through the numbers, so right now, current construction overages, we estimate, worst-case scenario, is eight hundred thousand. Is that the, is that a total of what we still anticipate is owed on the construction project?
That is what they said that could be the max. Working with QCI, QCI does not believe that's going to be the final number. I know Holly's been working as well, I think that number's in the five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand dollar range that we're at.
Okay.
We still have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we have to pay towards that.
So, let me pause you right there, so that two-seventy-five, is that coming from the set aside of the three-ninety that started the project?
Yes.
Is that, okay, so that's the two-seventy-five is what we have left from the set aside?
Correct, and the hundred and sixty-five that we did pay out of that original three-ninety, that is still up for mediation, that we may be getting that back from the architect, so...
So, that's an additional...
That would come back to us.
How much is left in the USDA fire admin fund?
Seventeen, seventeen grand in that ballpark.
All right, so we've roughly estimated seven to eight. Do we have any other funds we're expecting from USDA, or is that tapped at USDA?
That's, that's all USDA.
Okay. Do we have a pay app from March of twenty-five that we received, correct, for the construction project? How much is that pay app for?
I believe it's like four hundred and something, maybe five total, sorry about that.
Five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we have not paid yet.
And that came in in March, and we were still holding that.
Correct.
Is that five hundred thousand part of the eight hundred thousand dollar figure, or is that a separate piece?
That is the pay app that we're, the retention that was held back. Part of that, and then some of the overages, and so it's part of that. I don't, from the eight hundred thousand, there was the, the QCI bill, and then overages due to Rycon, is what there were.
So, I'm just trying to clarify, is it, so we owe eight hundred thousand, is the five hundred part of the eight hundred, or is it eight hundred plus five hundred?
Eight hundred was the max that they thought we would owe.
So, if we pay this five hundred today, which is to say we had that money, we paid the five hundred today, we would still only owe three hundred thousand max and be done?
From my understanding, from, or from moving on.
So, the five hundred is part of that.
That's my understanding.
Probably do have...
Yes, that is what they, that should be part of, part of the total amount.
So, the pay app should be part of that?
Hey, Nick?
Yes?
Do you want to explain to them why we got QCI?
Yeah, yeah, we can talk, actually, I have that in my notes.
Yeah, you should, just so they understand the thoughts in the beginning.
So, QCI is a project management firm that came in end of phase one or phase A, whatever we called that, and continued through phase B or two, to monitor the construction project. We were having concerns between the contractor and the architect throughout the process. There's communication concerns there, there were delays in processes, things weren't being done correctly. This allowed that project management firm to catch those pieces, document that, most importantly, those documentations, allow us to better return some of that money to us, right? They can show where the construction errors were, the professionals in this area.
And so, the right material that was being used and everything else. And remember, we had a period, we had a problem, because we were getting all these change of work orders that had no signatures.
Correct.
So, because none of us are project managers, that's for sure.
Right.
So, I mean, we had, what was the total amount we had in?
All I know is that there were, there were change orders that were approved by Rycon to change the brick on this building. We never, we never signed off on any of those at all, but they were an increase in brick. Yet, then the masons wanted their money, and we're fighting over that, because we didn't approve that. There were multiple approval forms that were not approved.
That was a big problem.
Right.
I mean, without us not getting QCI, I mean, who knows what the cost could amount? I mean, I went into the restroom over here, they had two different tiles.
Well, the workmanship there is a problem.
Right, and the tiles they put up were already coming off the wall. So, I mean, this was a, this saved us all money, believe it or not.
They were there to help our, I'll say, Rycon wasn't probably our best choice, but we didn't know what we were choosing. We had, we had an architect that thought it would work out, and they met the bid specs and all that. But, with the five project managers that they had, they just kept replacing people, so, I don't know, we had multiple issues along the way, with multiple things.
All right, the eight hundred thousand, I'm just trying to get the total number, John, that's all I'm trying to get to.
Sure.
So, we have the eight hundred thousand, which includes the five hundred thousand pay app. Is there any additional anticipated pay apps or other bills, maybe QCI bills or anywhere else, that we still anticipate for this construction project that could be over the eight hundred thousand dollar point?
I do not know if QCI has a hundred bill out there or not. They're still fighting on our behalf, I'm not expecting anything from, well, I guess I can't say that either, because officially Rycon's not done. There are still, I mean, Craig will list it, there's multiple things that still haven't been cluselist items that aren't even finished, so, I mean, I don't know if we're going to get another bill from them or not.
So, Holly, can you put that on your kind of little to-do list? Can we follow up with QCI getting anticipation? Because I think having all these numbers is going to be important to figure out how we expel those fines.
QCI already, that was the, that was, the amount that they gave us, that maximum of eight hundred thousand included all anticipated costs. So, there's nothing...
So, future arbitration-type things, if they had to do that, or mediation? Is that...
Right, I guess as far as construction costs, this most recent pay app was included in that maximum amount, so they are not anticipating any additional bills from Rycon outside of what's already been stated for that, again, that maximum eight hundred thousand.
Thank you.
That's what, so we don't expect anything from Rycon, but we could have additional QCI costs.
We could, just because, yes, to confirm, because they're, they're going to mediate through the end of this project, and we don't know how much that, how much time that's going to take or, or cost for that.
So, John, we met in May, and then on Tuesday, you had sent an email with a request for eight hundred thousand. That's just based on the estimates that we got from QCI.
Right, because we were going to the bank, and we didn't want to get five hundred thousand if we needed to do that, and that would be eight. So, we did the worst-case scenario. But then we started looking at other things, to change other things down, but that was the first thing we had to get, because we had a pressure from, from Rycon to make, make do on the bill. So, we were trying to do the best we could do.
All right. In May, we talked about the eight hundred thousand dollar loan, that's where this discussion originated from. I requested a breakdown of the construction costs based on general costs affecting both sides, direct fire-related costs and direct admin costs. Has there been any movement on that project to separate those out? Because I'm trying to understand, if we had to go a loan route, what that percentage would look like, so that fire can accurately calculate what the impact would be to their budget?
That is not done, but I will work on that.
Okay. All right, Chief Malali, the fire budget funded, three hundred and seventy-five thousand estimated for the project beyond the levy funding, and the funds were placed and holding, did you operate under the understanding that the funds would be returned to you at the project end?
Correct.
Did you consult with the fiscal office prior to running your last levy and understand that funds would be returned?
Correct.
John, what is the status? Do we think the three hundred and ninety, three hundred and seventy-five, three hundred and ninety is going to make it back to the fire budget? Or is that something, we don't know if it's going to make it back there?
Well, before that, I mean, the board wouldn't know that either, but the, the costs for those overruns, we didn't even really figure those out until March, when we got all that stuff back from them. So, we didn't even have a final cost from anything. I would have assumed that they would come back, because we did have a contract for X amount of dollars, yet it's still going over that amount. That money was set aside for, if we, when we built the police department, we had a, we had an EPA claim, because we bore it under the street, and we didn't realize that there was an old gas station pump that, or tank that was still there. The county didn't show it, nobody showed it. We had that extra cost, that's what those extra monies were set for. We did run into an issue back here with the Twichell's House that's behind here that was imploded, that when we were putting in the underwater retention ponds, we had, we thought that we were going to hit a lot of stuff back there, we didn't. That money was put out there for those types of things, that were unseen events, that before the loan got kicked in, or should have all got paid out of that, but, but the loan got, the, the cost of the buildings, more than that, so... I didn't see it coming, I mean, I'm not a construction guy, I didn't know. I mean, I found out from the people that we hired, that do all that stuff for a living, that's when they started telling us, it's in. But, we did hear along the way, that construction costs, that labor costs, the concrete, the lumber, all that stuff was going through the roof. So, I guess if you would have twisted my arm behind my back and said, hey, are the buildings, is the project going to be on, on task? I would say probably not, because of all this stuff, I mean...
I guess, yeah, and I understand that, and I'm not arguing that piece. What I'm just looking for is, can we anticipate the three seventy-five or the three ninety going back to the fire fund to balance his budget, or is that a piece that's just not returning to that fund?
I think it's going to go to the, the project cost, so...
So, it's going to project?
Yeah, but we did have overruns on the fire and all that as well, so...
And of that three hundred and seventy-five thousand, is that where it's going to be? Three ninety, I'm sorry, that was one of my other questions. So, the other three ninety that was funded, we anticipate two hundred and seventy-five of it is still sitting in their account?
It is.
Which is what you're going to use to help pay down the eight hundred thousand?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, please just stop calling it the eight hundred thousand, that's the estimate.
The estimate, eight hundred, yeah.
We don't know.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page that it's the estimate. All right, costs for project management were incurred late in phase one and throughout phase two by QCI. Where did we pay for the cost for QCI out of? Did that come out of general fund dollars, did that come out of construction USDA slash FD set aside?
Not the FD set aside, it was coming out of the USDA.
So, this came out of the USDA? All right, so QCI came from the USDA. So, that's part of the reason we see those overages, that potential overage of eight hundred thousand, is because we incurred...
We didn't expect to have QCI cost, I mean, QCI, I think the total we figured out the other day was two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, so...
That's where we're at, that was, you read my mind, that was my next question, so two hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Two sixty-three, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
By that.
Hey, John, when they had to redo the roof over there, remember we were stuck on the roof, because they couldn't get the insulation?
Yep.
I can't remember, did we, did they build it themselves, which cost us an exorbitant amount of money? Because we couldn't, the project was completely held up.
That was my understanding that they were, I didn't watch them do it, but I don't know, Nick, you were in the middle of that one, what was going on? I thought, no, I thought the argument was, they wanted to build it themselves, but they ended up getting the Hunter panels. So, the fight was, they delayed, because they needed Hunter panels, because we needed to reach a certain R-value on that building.
So, so didn't we get the Hunter panels in?
I thought they got the Hunter panels.
Were those over beyond what they told us to start off with?
No, that ended up being what they contracted. Yeah, and that was the big argument, though, is they wanted to charge, sorry, she's like in the middle of the table.
I know, I wish we could all be at a table looking at each other.
We had bid the Hunter panels, because that was the most efficient way to get to R-value. During COVID, the, the statement from Rycon was, they couldn't source Hunter panels. So, what they wanted to do was hand-build the Hunter panels, so plywood, insulation plywood. But, it would be an additional cost to us. So, we said, no, they're available, and there was a long discussion, this, this went on for an elongated time, because we kept saying they were available, and Rycon said they weren't. Well, it turned out, through QCI or through another agency, we found out the Hunter panels were available, and they were available at cost, but there was an inflated transportation piece that they had.
We all, we all remember that well, that's when I would drive by, and there would be two people working here.
Because the project was stalled on the Hunter panels.
It was a significant delay in the cost of the project.
But then the Hunter panels were found and put, put on roof, so it was built to the specs of the original.
Okay, good.
Well, and then just to see, and I hate to add, keep adding these things, but Rycon kept trying to build us, or bill us for their management staff that was here for that month and a half, while nothing was happening, because they were on site, which was not our, we should have had to pay for those guys sitting here for a month and a half. But, again, those are some of the fighting amounts that we're, problems that we had, we're fighting over things like that with it.
No, it was months, I could have walked naked through this building, and nobody would have saved me, you know?
No, I'm not going to do that.
All right, all right, so, when we look at this, we're looking for essentially a potential overon eight hundred thousand. Fire needs to take into consideration that the three ninety would not come back to their budget, so we'll need to look at those numbers as we calculate these options.
And just, I want to add to the M and I, or the Jed piece there too, that, that number is not including the increase that was halfway through the year, with the percentage of the Jed. I never do that when I'm estimating, because I don't know how much we're going to get until we get it, so that number could be higher.
Okay. All right.
Hey, Holly, did, you go to those... Hey, Holly, did, you go to those JED meetings, has Townage given you any kind of projection for next year?
I don't know offhand, honestly. I don't, I.
Yeah, I just wonder if they did.
Yeah, I, I don't recall.
All right, I want to switch gears for a minute over to general fund because it ties into all this together. Salaries, just based on the numbers, John, from the 2025 budget you sent me and sent to the whole board. Salaries account for approximately sixty-three percent of the annual general fund budget. Consumer care, which is our health insurance, accounts for an additional fifteen percent of that. That total is approximately seventy-eight percent of the budget of the general fund is budgeted to salaries and benefits. So, that's about, that's about right. During the 2025 May meeting for the construction loan, it was brought to our attention that there was a hundred thousand dollars was going to be used for general fund, which was kind of low. Do we anticipate a shortfall or lack of funding in the general fund currently or at any point during 2025 that's going to require at least a hundred thousand dollars in additional funding?
If we take no action with those, yes, we are. What we're, right, right now, we're holding some checks, we're thirty day net on them, we're holding some of those. We're waiting for our Townage and M and I, or JED payment to come and our M and I, or a draw from the county. So, that's where we are with that. We, we kind of do that all the time though. I mean, it's, it's not a, we're not, we're not rich there. We're not, you know, over, holding a bunch of money over. We, we, we run right real close to the cusp on all that stuff. But this isn't the first time this happened, it happens all the time. But we'll be, it'll be solvent, all those bills will be sent out at the beginning of July when we get that draw. So, we're waiting fifteen days, so.
Mike, I want to clarify, since I, I think I was recently added to the JED board, I have, we have not had a meeting since I've been on that. So, I was trying to remember all the meetings I've had, but I've not been a part of any of the meetings yet to have any updates on the Townage.
I might give the mayor a call.
Yeah, we can find out.
I know they do a lot of numbers.
When I was at the meeting, remember, we only meet.
Twice a year?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah, and during our annual meeting, there was no project.
You're supposed to meet twice a year, I can't remember.
Yeah, just once for the Townage, the Kent one meets.
Well, Nick, maybe, I mean, if you want to call her.
Yeah, I can.
I mean, I, I don't mind.
I mean, well, I mean, we can get it. First, on a first name basis, you can call her and find out today what it's going to be.
Yeah, she should, they're, they're great, great to talk to and be nice to know.
I'll tell them to ask right now.
I mean, I'd like to, they really can't project too much with the Kent JED, but with all this building going on.
Well, and we don't even know how much we're going to get from the construction, from the Martin Wheel, Kenda Tire thing over there, from the VA building, those are all construction people, we don't know how much we're going to get. We don't know how much those wages are going to be over there, but they're going to be a lot.
And I know, Kent Tire, didn't they say they're going ahead, they're so excited here that they're going ahead in phase two?
I heard that, but I'm not the right one to, Mike's.
I'm pretty sure they're going through a phase two.
All right, so if we are, so you're saying that if we don't get any additional money into the general fund, then there's a potential concern. Is that concern directly related to paying off the construction loan? Or is that additional overages in the general fund currently?
The general fund is, is short right now. But in July, we'll be back to that point and then we'll be able to make payroll and do all that. Until probably December will come along, we'll have the same issue where we'll, we'll delay on some things. Or there are projects that we have out there right now in the general fund that if we, we remove some of those or get rid of those, then that'll change the whole story in the general fund. Because I know we have had some events out there that we've, we've talked about, not continuing with. That changes the whole story because all those dollars are coming out of the general fund and if we don't do those projects, then it's a different story for the general fund.
Well, Nick, we got to come up with some kind of consensus because.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to get to.
Right, because I'm not going to be here next year and you're going to, you guys are going to have to, for future trustees, you're going to have to have this stuff put in place because John's not here forever. We got to have the money, but let's, let's, don't forget, these TIFs, remember, we can change some of these TIFs. So, they benefit us.
Right.
So, we, we need to look into that.
So, John, is there a concern going into twenty-six and twenty-seven that if we don't make any changes, meaning there's no redistribution of JED funds, no redistribution of salaries, or no, no layoffs or pay eliminations in some fashion, that the general fund is going to continue to operate shortfall twice a year or potentially shortfall longer than that?
Um, I'm not going to talk into the year prior to that because of future because we're getting increased JED, so I don't know what that amount's going to be for. But I could tell you right now, yeah, that's going to be July. Then it'll be solved and I could tell you the same thing is going to happen in, in December. So, what'll happen is we'll hold some of our bills and that's just what we'll do. And then when we get our draw and get our, our checks from the Townage and Kent, then we'll release and everything will be normal. We're, we're rich half of the year and then we're poor at the end of that because we get six months of draws. At the beginning, we have money, we have to last that throughout the six months and we don't have enough in the general fund to have a flush amount going past the end of the six months. We pretty much run right out of money at the end of the, the six months and we're waiting for money to come in.
You're saying that we break even on December thirty-first or do you think there'll be a shortfall December thirty-first and we have to wait till the new calendar year to get money in to cover the, the December?
Saying that the, the December thirty-first, we're probably in that same situation because we don't get a draw until about the fifteenth or twentieth of the first quarter of January.
So, essentially, the, the general fund needs to be evaluated and looked at. Do we fund it additional money or do we make changes in the general fund?
Exactly.
Outside of, we took the construction project out of this, that needs to be done no matter what.
Correct, and that was why when we had the loan and then we weren't going to be up to eight hundred thousand, that's why I was suggesting that we would take a hundred thousand dollar loan, which would solve our issues in a short term and we could pay it off in, in the next year and be on our way, but.
So, knowing that, why did we, why did we move forward with the pay increases for 2025? Move forward with ADP, move forward with festival projects? Like, if we knew we had these shortfalls, I'm just.
True.
And then you're saying, yeah, we can do it, I'm just, I'm trying to figure that out. And it's, this is just finding facts, like I'm not placing one here. Trying to understand why we would do that and put ourselves into that financial piece. Why, you know, why didn't we interact sooner to bring that down? Because I've never seen it where we're holding, I didn't know we hold bills in July and I didn't know we hold bills in December.
We do that all the time.
That's news to me.
To add to that, Nick, I know we've talked about this before, but the ADP was not a money saving effort. The ADP was getting us back under a situation where we could cut down on airs and human entry and there we've had from department heads coming to the fiscal officer, from the fiscal office going out to them, we have had airs. So, we were trying to solve those airs with the ADP system. If, if we have an employer or two that leaves right now, we don't have a, a way to do payroll at all right now. So, that's why we were hoping that we would have a system out there because we're not just twenty people anymore. I mean, it, it's a very blown, huge, big process every, every two weeks to do that. So, that's why we were doing that with the, with the ADP. In regards to the cost of living increases, I'll, I'll cut something else before I cut somebody's wages. So, everything goes up, everybody's paying higher for costs for groceries, all that stuff. The last thing I'm going to do is cut their three percent increase, I'll cut somewhere else.
And I'm not saying that I would cut the COLAs either, but if that's what, we were so tight, we should have been looking at other pieces and I'm not.
Well, I brought up, stuff about the Brim Fest did not have that anymore, I know we, I brought that up.
And I know we have talked about the Brim Fest, I mean, fireworks are astronomical.
Right, we were given a budget to work within that thirty thousand.
So, I mean, back when we, we approved all this stuff, I mean, like you said.
Well, and we didn't know that fireworks were going to get hit by TIFs and go through our TIFs, tariffs. So, that's why we got rid of all that.
But back to the core piece, ADP, I wasn't in, I was not making the statement that it was to save money. It was just the cost. Would it have been better to have rolled something out like that in 2026 when it was built into the budget instead of mid-year where we are already saying that, hey, we're having shortfalls, we need a hundred thousand dollar loan?
I would have chose something else other than the ADP because that was to make sure that things were accurate, to make sure that we have the ability to run payroll if we need. If we lost an employee somewhere, if we lost an department head that ran payroll, we would have a company out there that actually knew how to do our payroll. So, that was why I was pushing that.
It just wasn't presented that way from, from anybody, right? Like, that, I think should have been part of that discussion.
Well, it was, we had some air issues that we were, we were working with and it was human.
I mean, the cost piece, that's why, I'm just trying to get to cost.
Sure.
I understand the benefits of ADP, I'm not saying that the refund benefits to it. It's, it's getting the cost piece and understanding where the disruption.
Well, right now, I mean, we're, I mean, in two weeks from now, all those bills that we have sitting over there are going to be released. We're normally, we're thirty day net is what we are. We're usually fourteen days or less net, we cut all of our checks. I'm not sure why you're doing that in the crowd out there, but that's, okay. All right. Anyway, the point is, is that we, we actually had, I don't even know where I'm at now because of that, but anyway, I'm going to skip by.
Net fourteen typically.
Oh, yes. So, we were, if you turn the bill in on Tuesday, a lot of the times we get, you know, department heads will bring their bills over. If it's before the Wednesday meeting, we process those, they're gone in a day. So, people are getting, some people are getting paid in a day from Redfield Township. I'm not going to say this is good or bad, but you know, the people, the bills that we might be holding are the big companies, the Ohio Edison's of the world and those, but the small contractor that's counting on that money, theirs are let go first when we're short. And then after we get our money, then I'll pay the Ohio Edison bill. It's a pick and choose because we're not trying to stick it to the little guy. But that'll be solved at the beginning of July when we get a draw again.
When I was looking at the projections here at costs for effects general fund and the options that exist, it looks like the payrolls that we were budgeting were the twenty-twenty. The budget hasn't set at the current salary of twenty-three.
Cost of, no, that would have been without the cost of, or the COLA increases and all. I took that from the two thousand.
Yeah, but if you look at the base numbers in the budget sheet you sent us, like, we'll use Holly's for example, it was a hundred and ten thousand, but in twenty-twenty-four, she went up to one thirteen. It doesn't show the one thirteen, it shows the one ten in there.
Because on the bottom, it showed their increases of what they were getting from the cost of living that would transfer the next year. If you want me to look at one of those sheets that I worked, just let me know.
Yeah, because looking at it, because then the one thirteen goes to one sixteen this year. Looking at those numbers, it doesn't, it seems like from my calculations of what you sent us, the, the payroll elimination would have been based on the twenty-twenty fours, not the twenty-twenty-fives. So, that, that money could be a larger amount coming into the general fund, which is a bigger hit to the fire.
I could check, I didn't know you had a question with that.
Yeah, no, it's just, I just found it this morning when I was showing a few pieces.
Okay, I'll look at it.
What is the project, so have you done any budget projections for twenty-six and twenty-seven specifically? Are we going to have those? I know that there's the unknowns, but still in the finance world, we project. What is that going to look like? How long are we asking for this process to go? Because it's important to know, are we asking for money from the general fund for twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight? Because it affects upcoming negotiations and it affects levies that exist and could exist in the future. So, what's your, how far out is that projection looking?
I'm not projecting insurance costs, I'm not predicting gas costs, I'm not predicting any of that stuff because nobody in this room would be able to predict those costs and be accurate with any of those. But the way our budget works every year is that I take, and it works for every township and I'm sure Matt would understand that as well, that we take the carryover balances from the year before. We take any estimated taxes from the county and we take any other resources that we have. That's what we have every single year. I'm going to use the road as an example. If we didn't do a project because something got, you know, out of control at the end of the year with the asphalt companies and we couldn't do something, the next year budget on that would have carried all that money forward. So, the next year budget for the road department would have been huge because we didn't do a prior year project. So, the way that I can estimate how much money we're going, I can estimate is going to look and see how much money we spent throughout the year. Fire department, if they have a pure and consistent fire where they lose all kinds of, you know, equipment and all that, their, their carryover balance is going to go to nothing. I don't know how to project any of those. All we can do is just go from year to year showing how much money we have. I know you mentioned you wanted to know a cost of insurance, I mean, we've got a zero the last three years because we fought with them and negotiated with them.
I didn't ask for cost insurance, I just look for general projections.
Yeah, I know.
Most companies do a one year, a three year, a five year projection. And listen, there are catastrophes that happen that we have to deal with and that. What I'm looking for is an understanding of how far that's going to go so that I can have that conversation with the chiefs and the road superintendent to say, this is the anticipated amount of time that we want to see a general fund shift or are we proposing this as a permanent general fund shift? And then what does that look like to your levies? What does that look like to your negotiating power? What does that look like to your budgets?
My, my job is to tell the department heads that we need every single year, tell them how much money they're going to have. They create their own budgets to make sure that they can make it through the county around that money. They're the ones in charge of making sure they live within those means. I can't tell the fire department if he has X amount of dollars that's available, that he couldn't spend it on X, Y, or Z. If it's a big expense, he'd have to come to you guys to get. My job is just to tell him that you have X amount of dollars. We do sit down every year though and go through their expected cost and try to figure out a budget for them going forward. Chris does some things, but I mean, that all has to do with union negotiate, I don't know what we're going to negotiate, what he's going to offer. I mean, my job is to give that information to the department head and then they go that next step.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing we still don't even know, we don't have a clarification yet from Boras County. What is our tech TIF revenue is going to be? I mean, we have no clue. Matt, have they figured any of that out? Yeah, because we, I mean, I think, I think some of the money, our money went to the school, I think. We're, we're, we're in a little, not sure where the, the money is. Anything you could do to help speed that up, that would be great.
One thing I'm saying, whenever I tend to tip me in or I delegate somebody to, we hold those companies completely accountable for exactly what that TIF says. I think historically maybe, and I'm not saying it to promote or anything else, but we would have held those companies for what they said in that TIF accountable for exactly what it says when they agreed to at the origination of that TIF. It's not, it's not a good situation. So, that's one thing that my office is trying to help the townships with is whatever that TIF says needs to have, that money is committed to township. So, how far with trustees, with your team, how are we getting this in?
Yeah, we just.
Well, Matt, we know that your staff's working on it, I appreciate their help. We've been on the phone with them and they're, they're working on it, so we're.
Yeah, it's nothing you guys did wrong, we just need to get it clarified. Because you know, that's some, you know, good deal of money just hanging out there.
Whatever projections you want, I'd give you contact.
Well, Holly's pretty, Holly, you're, you're pretty involved in that. Yeah, if you would, I mean, I don't want to, I just, it'd be nice for us to get a clarification.
Well, yeah, we just need a big pic, the whole picture so we can see what.
Man, I understand what you're talking about. And even if we, even if we can get even estimates from the Kent on their JED. I mean, you know, we know they're not solid, but at least they give us something to, to look forward to.
Hey, Nick, just real quick, I, just to follow up on that piece. Mr. Dehoff was at the last board meeting, he did share that there's, he's been in dialogue with the county on that piece. He's expecting to be roughly six figures. I know we have restriction on what we can use TIF funds, but he did say there is going to be a chunk of money coming in.
Okay, and that was new information that was just through the last meeting. All right, so now I'm going to kind of switch focus over to the department heads, just for me to have an understanding. When we look at these three, possibly four options, the fourth one, Mike, I like your idea. We just need to get some numbers behind it before we talk about it. We'll start with Roy. If we were to go to, to switch from the thirty, thirty, thirty to the twenty-five percent distribution of JED funds, meaning your, your division would move sixty-eight thousand dollars back to the general fund, roughly thirty-four thousand for twenty-twenty-five. Looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven projections, is that something that's financially sustainable for the department? Can it keep us on the trajectory where we're going, maintaining the essential services?
Uh, yeah, just, so just to kind of clarify that piece. So, after we met last week with John, the kind of the conversation became more nuanced. I'm kind of peeling back, you know, exactly what we were looking at. So, we presented a couple of different options. So, when I looked at that option that was presented as one of the, one of the options with the sixty-eight K, you know, John clarifying that the amount for this year would actually be for the half year amount, not necessarily the full amount, and looking at that amount for next year. We also had a specific discussion around the JED maintenance and improvement fund and how that has been utilized for several years for our police cruiser purchase. That has been very, very valuable to us and we've always planned our levies based on that piece. So, every JED dollar used is a tax levy dollar saved. So, our discussion was that we would be able to utilize the JED M and I for our cruisers going forward and that was a big question and a big piece that I had in the back of my mind. So, with clarification of those two pieces with the amount for half of this year, the help for next year and then also utilizing the JED M and I for our cruisers, could we, could we absorb this? Yes.
And we would not see any staffing changes at all in twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-seven based on that?
Not based on what I'm seeing today.
Okay. If we were to look at it from a staff pay reorganization and then the police department picks up the ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, which would be half for this year and full, full amount for twenty-five, or twenty-six, twenty-seven, how does that look for you?
Well, it's a bigger number, right?
Yeah.
But as I look at, again, making so the same assumptions based on the other one, just changing those figures around, MNI getting our cars with half the amount being coming out this year, not the full amount. Obviously, the amount of carryover I'm projecting '27 would be lower. But, you know, again, is this something we could do? Yeah, I think we could do that. I think one of the overarching questions is, how long are we doing this? You know, for how many years is this going to be necessary? I think a secondary question is, is this something we can look at holistically and say, we're going to put a solution in place for now to get us to the end of this year, the first part of next year with a new board of trustees, and then sit down and reexamine this again and reevaluate this again? Because we do have some unknown variables out there as far as JED money, as far as the actual monies that are coming in. There's some, there's some unknowns that are still floating around out there. So as you discuss all these things, I would just say, is there something we can look at where we can reexamine this after the first year and then reevaluate? That's my two cents on that.
See Nick, this is where I worry because sure, we can fix this, but we're not going to fix it for future trustees. We have to figure out a way, we've got to have a continuous stream for you guys to operate. Because this is going to happen year after year. Back in the beginning, before Chick and I went crazy, we had enough extra money in the general fund that we could help people. It was like mom, grandma's cookie jar. We don't, our, our cookies are gone. We need to, we need to build it up for lean times like this because this, believe me, we are, the JED is not going to go forever.
Right.
You've got to start, you've got to come up with a mechanism. We got to come up with a mechanism to save us this year. But we need a continuous mechanism that's going to save you guys in the years to come.
Well, that's what I'm trying to look at these projections and, Roy, do you start to see the end piece? So do we start to see that number eventually aiming towards the negatives if we continue with both of these operations? Or is this a sustainable hit to the, to the department?
I just think we probably, we probably, based on what you're, you're asking today, and again, we have unknowns going forward.
Yeah, these are just estimates.
You know, in 2028, there would have to be a, you know, an evaluation of all that from the police perspective, yes.
I think your evaluation would have to be '27. What we were talking about the other day is that we do this for '25 and '26.
Yes, yeah, I was just thinking down the road beyond.
Going that far down the road is not going to, that would work.
But my concern though too is the general fund running that tight, right? It's going to have to be continual change. We have to make some changes. Do we not do certain projects moving forward from now on? Do we, you know, we can't put this on the backs of the safety forces and force them to push another levy sooner than later. We have to, we have to look at those pieces and see how do we adjust this in the long run? And that's why I'm looking at the numbers, right? We have, I understand that jets can change, dollars can change, catastrophes can happen. But, but the business sense is projecting that out and seeing what is sustainable? And are these costs that were incurring sustainable in the admin fund?
Well, well, Nick, to add to that, I mean, I've explained that before. Every year, it's a different story. Sometimes police is in the whole fire road, it doesn't matter. What we have done in the past is we have made sure that that didn't become an issue. The general fund has helped in multiple facets. We have worked and negotiated with them to make sure that they had money, did not have to let staff go to higher other staff. We've done all that. This year's just another one where we need to talk about that. And then next year, it's going to hold, be a totally different story. Our, our jet taxes are going to go up. I mean, we have a percentage. We don't know how much they're going to go up, but, I mean.
Like any family, any family budget, you've got to save money. I think we have to start as a board saving money in the general fund.
Yeah.
I don't want to go, you guys go year, year, and year.
Well, that's where I'm trying to get to, is the general fund have too many costs in order for us, we can't save. Because Johnny just said, every July, every December, we're out of cash.
Right.
Therefore, the, the general fund is burning more money than it can truly sustain. We have to look, how do we change it? Do we infuse it with dollars? How much is the dollars that it needs to be infused with? Or do we make changes to that?
Well, that's your decision you're going to have to make. I mean, and that's why I'm trying to get to. Eighty percent of that is about insurance and.
Eighty percent is insurance and.
And payroll, right.
I know, and I wish we were, had Mike Ladd here because you know, some of these TIFs, you know, like we got the one from, I hate to say it, Maguire Park. You know, I mean, some of that stuff should be directed, I mean, we have a lot of different TIFs that we could use that would just go into the general fund. I mean, even, even though those TIFs are what, 20 years or whatever the duration? So these are all things we, as a board, need to decide. We're not going to do that today.
No, I'm just trying to get the information so I can put together better projections and help us make.
And I mean, you know, as along, because you know, you did bring some good points, you know, you know, Brimfest, those, some of those things. I mean, we do as a administratively, we probably should cut some of those back temporarily. Number one, we have no parking for any of these events and fireworks, you know, with the tariffs, Jimmy Christmas. You know, some of these things we can make decisions today.
Right.
So.
All right, let me go to fire. Shmali, 68, so the 68,000, 34,000 this year, hit to the budget based on the 50, 50, or the 25% split in JED funds. Is that sustainable for the fire department '25, '26, and '27?
Well, after, after hearing what I heard today of not getting the $390,000 back, I think the answer is no. But, but I want to, I want to talk about that two-part. I think we're sitting here today discussing, this is just my opinion, we're discussing all of these things that we're going to do. But I heard, I mean, we don't know the final cost of the building, John, we, we don't know that. We don't know where that's going to be. That could be significantly less. The second half money's coming in two weeks. We talk about TIFs coming and money coming and all these things coming and we're going to be fine again. So I'm not sure why we're looking at changing the revenue streams with all the unknowns. Is that fair to say? I do have negotiations coming up this year and we just talked about not cutting percentages. You know, so we're going to be at least 3% on that. So there's things coming, but there's so many unknowns to make a decision today on how we're going to disperse.
Well, I don't think a decision is happening today. Today is the information gathering.
I thought it was, sorry, I thought it was happening today.
Yeah, now this is information gathering for us so that we can put together, make some informed decisions at the board, have additional conversations. Because this is just dealing with the general fund question essentially. Which leads to, well, let me go over it first and then I'll come back to the bigger question.
Hold on, I want to finish.
Okay.
And just, you, you asked the other day for us to calculate. We do have graduating entry-level firefighters, which have graduated this week, so those salaries will double. I do have the million-dollar federal grant which will, 5%. I know that's not a lot, but that could be 50,000 that I anticipate this year. And we just hired on three new entry-level firefighters. So those are the costs that I was hoping to cover.
But those are all built into your budget. That was part of your projection, that was part of your plan of action based on the levies that we have and the passenger levies.
Correct, and let, and let me piggyback off that, based on the projections of having that extra, let's call it $400,000. I did not run any levy, we ran a renewal last year. Because I did think I was getting that back, so.
Correct.
That, that will, that will hurt moving forward.
Dave, I'm going to come down to you. Looking at these budget pieces, let's start with the 25% JED change. So 34,000 your budgets, budget this year, 68,000 in '26, '27. How does that look for, for roads?
We, we should be fine with that option. I actually, truthfully, I like that option better because it's through the JED fund and I don't have to worry about salary increases and that kind of stuff. You know, I mean, I, I feel better with the JED, the JED funds, on that being distributed evenly.
Would it have any impact to the services that you do with this reduced number of roads, reduce anything inside D?
I'd tell I'd project the new costs of asphalt projects. Because like, the number was brought up, what we had in our funds right now, I mean, projectively, I have 472,000 going out in projects this year yet. So that haven't started. Again, I don't, I don't know the cost of what asphalt and concrete's going to be next year for road projects and stuff. So it's kind of hard to just say that's going to happen. But we can, we can truthfully work around pretty much some of these options to sustain things, but we may have to cut back on the amount we'll be doing.
All right. So John, if we were to take any of these three options, maybe the fourth one, like I said, we need to work numbers on that. But the three initial options that you proposed, or the two, does that cover the construction also, or is that just making general fund? So if we did the, if we did the 25% split, that gives 287,000 in '26, so 140,000 this year. That's still, those numbers don't add up to enough to cover the construction cost?
I don't know that, just like Craig had said, we don't know what the final cost is going to be in the building. So I, I don't know. If it comes down and we get the $165,000 back because of airs and admission claims of Moody Nolan, they should have been giving some of that money back. If we don't have to pay the full extent of some of these RICON charges, then yeah, we could pay that all right away with all that money. If all of a sudden we don't get any of that, which I don't know, I don't know. And I don't know what, you know, Moody or QCI's numbers are going to be after they get done with all this. That's a very difficult question.
We have a payoff sitting though for 500,000.
True.
What do we, I mean, it's been sitting in March. Holly, you've had people calling, correct?
Correct.
Sure.
So what do we, what are we doing to solve that in the short?
We're looking for a loan, is what we're doing in the short.
So are we looking at loan and this, or is it loan or this?
It's, it depends on which choice you pick. I mean, if you, if we come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, then we, and it's, it's 500 grand that we need to pay for, then we can take care of it without getting a loan. Because we already have 275,000 sitting out there. It depends on what that number ends up being. The general fund, we just leave it at this. This happens all the time. This happens all the time with fire and police, not right now. But there have been years in the past where we've held certain, you know, bills because we've been short. We've worked our way through it. We're going to work our way through this on the general fund as well. So the biggest thing is what do we do with the overrun on the building?
But I'm not saying that we won't eventually work our way through this, right? But what I'm saying is, how do we make the general fund more sustainable? How do we, future proof it so that we don't see that your office is stressing in June, July, holding bills, December, January, holding bills? You know, how do we change that? I mean, that's, if my budget was that tight at home, I would start changing things, right? I might not have, I might have the cable TV anymore because.
Where you guys are here, right.
Right? And that's what I'm looking for from you is, hey, I need to know these numbers because.
We spend too much money out of the general fund. We don't collect enough to pay all those. As simple as that.
So as simple as that, so, so therefore with that statement, we need to be looking at, what do we cut from the general fund?
You either cut or you add money to it. It's one or the other.
We have to create revenue streams for the general fund, out of, out of somewhere.
But is there bloat inside of the general fund too, becomes part of that question? I think that needs to be a discussion that we have.
Well, eighty percent of our stuff is payroll, so I mean, I don't.
When we start cutting things, the workload changes too, right? Like, what, what do we do when we, we look at this?
I think everyone in that department is essential over there. I mean, I don't know what we do if we cut one of them. I don't know who takes on that extra work. I mean, I, I've talked about Holly multiple times, but Holly, that girl works over way too much. She's, she's, you know, one of the most hardest working people that we have here in Redfield Township. But if I got rid of one of those staff over there, I mean, the four of us are part-time employees that have other jobs and have all of that. Who's that extra work going to go on? Is it going to go on Holly, who's already overwhelmed with so much stuff going on? Or, I mean, Mike Ladd is overwhelmed because of all the building and all, I mean, there's just so much stuff. I don't know where we put that extra responsibility on somebody. You know, and then what problems does that cause? When they get overworked and then we, they, they move on. You know, so it's a, it's a rough question that you have to solve. But the, the issue is that we need, you either need to make cuts or you need to add more money to it. It's, that's simple as that. And there's no, there's no magic about all that.
You look like you're contemplating stuff, yeah.
Oh, no, I, John makes a valid point. I think it, as a resident of the community, as a longtime resident since we've lived since 1998, I think looking at the situation, I think what, I think the average resident, and I think it's reasonable to say, if we're going to ask for the safety forces to help out, I get that, but I think we need to see it from both sides. There needs to be some assistance, some, some changes administratively, and then also the helps, or a combination of both to contribute to the solution. That's my opinion.
And, and I feel, I really kind of second that. If we're going to make changes and ask for police, roads, and fire to give up money, we got to look at the admin fund too. We got to look at the general fund. What changes are we making to be more sustainable?
You should look at all four of those funds, you guys, right?
Yeah, and those are places that we can dig into, but right now, we're dealing with the general fund question. But that's, that's where it exists today. So what do we do? What do we, what are the proposals? Holly, I guess I'll kind of turn to you. What are your thoughts on this? Where do you see adjustments needed? And maybe the answer is I need to look into it more, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, first off, so when, as, as we've been trying to figure out how to get out of this situation, so I did some research, I called other townships from Jackson, Boardman, Bath, Ravenna, even Talman, I know it's a city, but, and even in my experience, the staff charges for shared services such as IT and trustees, it's pretty typical for organizations to spread those costs among the departments that they serve. So first and foremost, I do, I do find that a lot of organizations, public entities, tend to take those salaries of the shared service staff and spread them across the department. So to me, that's a feasible option. Two, kind of to the point of what's been said, is that I think the general fund for so much time was in a good position and it took on all these extra bills. So I mean, just looking at alone the utilities, just through March, I think March or April, the general fund has paid over $20,000 in electricity for police, fire, and roads. To me, that's something that the police, fire, and roads should pay for their own electric bills. It shouldn't be coming out of the general fund. So to me, there's very simple things to reallocate the departments that'll help us stabilize before we even get to a position of talking about staff cuts.
And I'm not, and I don't want people to assume I'm looking just at staff cuts, right? I'm just looking at the whole picture, what other things like that utilities, what else exists out there?
And, and outside of that, so just so everybody knows, general fund, again, it's not what, it, everybody out there, what I see is, well, this is admin's problem, they've been spending too much. General fund pays for a lot more than admin. And as we've said, the revenue source for the general fund is much lower than every other area. So I, again, I, I just think that there's a lot of things that we can do to, to tighten this up and reallocate funds. And the things that we are spending since I've been here, we've, we've cut back on everything. There, we're, we're not, we're not purchasing things. The biggest expenditures are coming out of the, the general fund are, are your parks events. That's the majority of, of the money that's being spent out of there besides your payroll costs.
Yeah, general fund accounts for about 8.4% of our total revenue coming in. Special revenue funds accounts for about 86.69% of utilities. So parks events is, seems to be one of the driving factors. I want to go back to utilities real quick. Utilities, John, is that something that is being transferred back to police, roads, and fire? Does it affect them immediately?
Yep.
So that's a cost that they will incur now?
We discussed that the other day with the, the three of them, uh, four of them actually. And that's, we all agreed upon that as a, as something that we should go forward with right away.
And is that going to be retroactive to January 1, or is that effective July?
I told them that we're going to make the June 1, is what I told them.
Okay. You said $20,000?
Yeah, so just through, and again, I, I, this, I would have to verify, but I think through April. So loan, police, electric bills were $3,992.18. Fire, electricity bills were $12,677.57, and roads was $3,279.22.
Was the fire electricity though, is that strictly fire, or how are we splitting the electricity between admin and?
There's two meters.
There's two separate meters?
So you said there's, it's kind of a problem out there.
Well, it's going, I mean, it's hard to tell, but there's one up before because we, I mean, we're all kind of part of the same building before. But now they are separated, but each has their own meter, so we can see what fire uses.
What additional, this, there's a lot to process here. I think we need to have another discussion before we make decisions. John, are we in a position that this needs to happen tomorrow? Or are we in a position that we can convene at another meeting, next trustee meeting? What's, what's the plan? What, what is the ask from?
Well, what I think we should do right now, just to keep RICON from beating our door down over there, I think we should pay the 275,000 that we have sitting out there, to pay to them. I, as in regards to the shortfall with the general fund, I say we do nothing and we wait until the beginning of July, which is two weeks from now, and it's going to be, it'll be, it'll be okay again. And then we'll run into that same issue again and.
But we need to solve it before that happens. We, there needs to be some change, so we can't keep running shortfalls.
Well, we're not. I mean, we'll imagine if this year we didn't do some of those events that we have scheduled out there, all that money comes right back into the general fund, so December won't be an issue. I mean, that's all, if we're doing Brimfest, if we're spending all these other, those dollars are committed. If we don't use those, they come back into the general fund, which then solves your problem at the end of the year. But where we are today, we have those funds committed, so we don't have them for everything else.
So with that line of thinking, we cut the festivals, we're fine at the end of December. There's no need to move police, roads, and fire money. There's no need to.
We're still short. I mean, we're still running real close. And there's no reason, I think, that the general fund should be incurring expenses from the other departments, especially how we've done it in the past. I mean.
But there's more time to plan for that, where we're not changing it mid-budget year? Or are you saying that you need this to change it mid-budget?
Yeah, I, I think we need to change it. I mean, that's, there's no reason why we should keep paying those additional costs.
Well, you, can't you just do that yourself?
Yeah, electricity I can, but in regards to the other stuff, I mean, I'm not going to, I work with the department. We've done this for 19 years now that I've been here. We, we all sit down and we go through it and we work it out. And then I'm sure that.
We just got to create those streams, Nick, I keep saying.
And I understand, I'm just trying to figure out where we need to be, is this a '25 or '26 average?
We've just got to increase.
We need to pay that 275 right now and then have.
If you have the cash flow, you have 275,000 sitting in the account right now, Nick. Do you need a board motion to do that?
Well, it's part of the, no.
Because it's part of the contract.
Action that you're part of.
But like, like I, I asked you before, is there, is there a way? Because I know that's more than just RICON. Who are we talking about, we're waiting on?
Well, RICON, Moody Nolan, and, and QCI.
RICON is the one that put us in this position. I hate, I mean, that's how it is. I mean, what about?
That's why I feel really bad about it.
What about the, the guy that did all the brickwork? Can't we give him some money? Can't we take some of that?
We only, we can only pay RICON.
Why?
So you can pay, because they're, they're contractors, so they, they're subcontractors.
So they'll pay, they'll pay the brick guy?
I don't know if they pay him or not. Our responsibility is to pay them. If they pay him or not, it's not our problem.
Okay. I just hate seeing these little independent guys that need the money get. Okay. I just hate seeing these little independent guys that need the money yet.
Well, as I mentioned before, when I hold our bills over there, I try to do our best to make sure all the independent little small guy out there is not being, they're getting paid first. And again, if I get in trouble for this, I mean, Ohio Edison's sorry, you're a big, big old company. If somebody has to wait, it's you.
I know, I'm not a guy that is supporting his poor kids.
No, I hear you. I hear you. That's what I'm telling you, though. That's how we, how we've done it in the past. Alright, we had a, I think we should do the two seventy-five, is what we should do right now, and then beat down on QCI a little bit more to get us that number.
But as we're doing this, let's get those anticipated jet revenues and stuff.
We need to anticipate, we need to, we need to reevaluate before, in my opinion, we need to reevaluate based on the missing information. We're missing TIF dollars, we're missing what the anticipated jet dollars are, before we go shifting costs to police, roads, and fire.
Well, let's all do our due diligence, you know, one trustee at a time, you know, talk to them, like, let's get a game plan about rearranging some of the tips, you know, because that could be a constant theme. You know, I mean, with the parks, I mean, nothing against the parks. I mean, I had counted on the parks getting grant after grant after grant. There are just so many grants out there for parks. For trails, for everything. It just, you know, with the way we've gone forward, we just have not had enough grants. And I mean, whether we don't have, didn't have the staffing, you know, there's just multiple things, but we have to take advantage of grants. We hire a grant, someone that does grants, let's get these, let's bring in additional revenues. I mean, parks are a big thing. They're here to stay. We all know that. You know, but we have to do it. So like, there's also that other thing, remember Nick and Sue? We created that thing, so every time a new home or business moves into town, the parks theoretically are supposed to get four hundred dollars per, per home, right? I don't remember what it was for the businesses. You know, I mean, we all know we don't need any more parks. We need to keep the ones going that we have, but we don't have to do, I mean, I hate to say this, we should have that money be put back into the, it is in the general fund, but have it classified, you know what I mean, John? So you can use it. We just-
Well, no, the parks are in the general fund too.
Nick, there's a lot more discussion here. And this is something, we know we can't fix it all today, but we gotta fix it for the next, for the next ten years.
And this is the first step towards that, and that's why I'm digging down. It's not, not to place blame, not to create arguments. I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're doing this the best way we can without minimal to no impact to police, roads, and fire.
But it really, we all need to do our due diligence in the next week or two, and let's get this thing figured out.
Cassie?
Yeah.
Brimfield Glowfest?
Yes.
Are we in any contracts for that, or is that something that we can cancel for this summer? We just focus on Swampfest, reevaluate Swampfest in a week or two, or is we in pursuit?
Yeah, so those checks, some of those checks that are being held right now are for the contractors for Let's Glow Brimfield. So I was gonna request if you could make a decision on at least that event today, because I would need to get those checks out there to secure that event. So nothing's been signed for that, anything we'd wanna go back on, we could.
Mike, what's your opinion?
I hate to do this, but we have no parking, Nick.
Well, we got the agreement back here.
Temporarily, yeah.
Yeah, we have that easement agreement.
I just think tariffs, parking, all the building, I mean-
Well, I'm not saying Swampfest here, let's start with Glowfest and then we'll-
I think we already, we already got the touch of truck, which is coming up, so that's full board. I think maybe Glowfest is something that can probably be put off.
What's the, can I, what's the cost for Swampfest? What's the cost? I'm just curious.
So we were out, Parks was allocated thirty thousand for all of the festivals.
For all three?
Yeah, so it's up to them to determine how those funds are allocated, but that was the total budget for, for all, really, all parks cost, all festivals for this year.
And I'm not saying that we don't cancel it. Roy, I'm saying that this one's immediate, like, it's coming fast, we gotta do that.
The touch of truck is not a big cost, is it?
No.
I don't think so. What do you estimate the cost on the Glowfest?
I think we're about seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five, so how much for the touch of truck?
I think we spent about four.
Okay, so that means the bulk of it's Swampfest.
Yes, and three thousand of that budget was reallocated towards the Maguire Park lake maintenance, so really, it's twenty-seven thousand for the festivals.
So we're, I mean, with Maguire, we're good where we are right now. We can hold off for a year and just, because I mean, it's open, the trails are open.
Yep.
That's why we took some of that money from, moved it up there, so we're good.
Because I, you know, I don't wanna take things with, the bad thing, and I've always told you, the bad thing with parks is you need a levy. But I hate not having a levy, you know, because you really have no budget. You've never had a budget. It's wherever we can squeak a dollar out or something like that, I mean.
Yeah, zoning, parks, IT, all have low, low budgets. They don't have any revenue sources.
But I sure don't wanna, you know, just talking to a bunch of old people, and we're older people, they don't want any more levies. And now with the thought of maybe the schools having, having something.
That's where I'll, that was my challenge to Craig when we did the last levy, was how do we do it without an increase, right? Like, I don't wanna see any more levies. I don't wanna ask taxpayers for any less. I wanna keep police, fire, roads operating to the full ability, keep our admin where we need to be. Sometimes we have to look at making some adjustments, and that's what we're doing right now.
That's been our-
We're gonna do it without the levies too.
That's been our goal for, ever since I've been here. I mean, working with departments, we try to work between all four departments to make sure that we can go and help them when they need it, they help us, just so we don't have to go out and do those kinds of things. So that's always been our concept.
And that comment came up recently, you know, wow, Mr. Foy is looking for levies. I'm not looking for levies. In fact, Craig and I, you and I had that argument. You originally were asking for the increase, and I challenged you to sharpen your pencil and make that better, and we ran that with no, no increase.
Well, we just have to remember, we finally got our safety forces up to where they should be. I mean, Roy, this is the first time you've pretty much had a full staff.
Well, it turns out your definition of full staff is-
Right.
We'd like to see that number.
Right, and I've gotten, and I've gotten to know a lot of your officers, you know, through where I work. But, you know, I still talk to some of them, and I tell you, I'm scared to death. Some of those calls, if they don't have backup, I mean, you know, I've heard numbers that, you know, we could use five, five more officers. You know, the world has changed. And, I mean, we're lucky that Brimfield people support safety forces. But there's these people out there that do not support police or fire.
Well, that's the same thing with fire. We had to push the numbers up, that's why we hired three new hires, is to basically have two squads. We're so busy, you know, I got the call from McIntyre over in, in, it's time going, quit calling my guys over here, because we don't have the number of staffing, we're getting the number of calls wrong. So this is how we're solving it.
Well, some of those nights, when those guys, the cops are out, I mean, it's crazy. It's one call after another.
Yep, both, both our safety force, and our road crew is busy with all the additional mileage and all the work they have to do. Just as busy for them, so we have to keep that in mind, is Mike and Troy's-
Well, you have to, because they're all family men and women, and, you know, again, the last thing I wanna see, God forbid, is one of our officers get hurt. Because we cannot maintain what we have. And what we have is good, but it's not good enough.
Well, and we need to-
Roy, nothing against that. I'm talking staffing. What we have is good, but it's not good enough.
Yeah, I would just, and I'd echo that, I would just say, speaking as an employee of township for the last ten years and a long-time resident, I think the average voter in our community, there's kind of three things, I think, that are front of mind for the average resident of our township. Is there a, is there a snowplow that plows my street when there's snow on my street and drops salt? Is there an ambulance or fire truck that'll show up at my house when my loved one needs medical care or is in trouble? And is there a police officer, an adequately trained and equipped police officer patrol my neighborhood? I think those are the three main things that are front of mind for the average resident of this community. I think everything else is somewhat secondary. I'm not saying not important, but somewhat secondary.
Exactly. And we have to keep that in mind too, as we go into negotiations, as we go into new contracts. We want, we have amazing staff here. I don't say this just to say it. I truly believe our police and our firefighters and our road crew are second to none in this state. We have some of the best firefighters, some of the best police officers, some of the best road crew. And we need to make sure that we compensate those pieces well too. We have to balance all this. And that's why I'm digging deep into the numbers, is because I don't want to see any of these individuals. Go from there, we're constantly, we're fighting the camps, we're fighting the townages, and have a much deeper pocket than us.
Sure. You brought that up, though, with the percentages that you had on your funds. What was the percentage you brought up for the general fund that they get out of the total? Eight point whatever it was?
Yeah, so it's eight point four percent is general fund coming in. Special revenue funds, which breaks down in some sub areas, but basically police, roads, and fires, is eighty-six point six nine percent.
But that's what I, I guess, I'm not fighting for one. I agree with everything you just said, but our whole admin staff, zoning, parks, IT, the trustees, all that are paid out of that eight percent.
But a lot of this is levies though, too, that are directly-
No, I get that, but that's what I'm saying. That's where that, and that fund has paid for a lot of things in the past. But I just wanted to point that out. We don't have a boatload of money coming in.
Craig's been itching to say something.
Yeah, I just, I just got a question, getting back to the topic of the money. Is that two seventy-five, because I marked down two seventy-five left in my fund, is that what that would come out of? So two seventy-five, so that leaves me with a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars left. Can I even make payroll?
Say that again?
Can I even make payroll if, if we take another two seventy-five?
Are you looking at the dollar amounts that are out there, because you're gonna get a draw here? Are you looking at dollars that are on that? That, that's just-
This is dollars, yes. I am looking at dollars on that.
Keep in mind, you're gonna get a draw in two weeks. So those numbers are gonna, they're half of the year, that's what we've had.
So they remain at the door?
Yeah, I mean, this is not, the appropriation sheet is a sheet that you should use. This fund balance sheet just tells you how much money we have today, but it doesn't mean that tomorrow, when we get a draw from the county, that number's gonna go through the roof.
So I'll go back to what you said before, John, and I'm agreeing with you. So in two weeks, we're fine again.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, two pieces I think we need to look at. Do we wanna take action, or do you wanna take action on Glowfest or not?
I'll make a motion that we-
We have to amend the agenda, too.
Okay.
Oh, actually, no, it's covered under, it's covered under adjustment, so yeah, you can make that.
Okay, I make a motion that in twenty twenty-five, we bypass, no, we cancel Glowfest.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussions? Cassie, is that gonna cause any issues on your end?
Nope, that should be fine. I did wanna make one comment, though. I was just looking at my year-end report. We do bring in some money for the Parks Department. We bring, last year, we brought in about fifteen thousand in rentals, twelve thousand in sponsorships, and about twenty-five hundred in program fees. So although we do spend more than that, we do bring in something.
Can you go do those numbers again for me real quick?
Yeah, we brought in fifteen thousand in facility rentals, twelve thousand in program sponsorships, and twenty-five hundred dollars in program fees.
And I know you are working on grants right now, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so we have a motion in the second on the floor for the cancellation of Glowfest, roll call.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alright, I think this is gonna be a discussion that's gonna continue at the next board trustees meeting. John, I know you're on vacation. When do you return from vacation?
Thursday.
Thursday the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Do we want to move our meeting to the twenty-seventh? That way you're here, so we can have that discussion?
Yeah, I mean-
So I would hate to hold this board meeting and we don't meet for two more weeks, and it's hard for us to have without your knowledge. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm here today. I mean, I couldn't be at the last minute because I had business issues with my insurance agency, so I, yeah, but we're-
We have a meeting next.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday the twenty-fourth, we have an evening meeting. Can we move it to?
I'll do whatever.
I'm back, yeah, I'm back on Friday, so if you wanna do that, it's fine.
We've done enough information, Nick.
I think we should do it then, just so that we can have that conversation. We wanna, so I'd like to make a motion to move the twenty-fourth meeting to Friday the twenty-seventh. I know it's a Friday night, but we'll do five P M, do it a little bit earlier, so we get out sooner. Because I hate to cancel our night meeting.
I don't know if I, I don't think I can do it. I think I, I can't do it tonight. I'm pretty sure I gotta cook a living.
Can we do it as, let's do this, because I don't wanna give up a night meeting. Let's make a motion to move it to Friday the twenty-seventh at eight A M, and then we'll move the next trustee meeting to a night.
That's fine.
How's that sound?
Okay, so you're making that motion?
Making the motion to move the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting to Friday, June twenty-seventh at eight A M. And then the July ninth meeting to July eighth at, what the New York is?
Um, yeah, six P M.
To six P M, on the eight. That way we don't keep any night meetings still, so that will be the one that comes in. But I think having John here, if next meeting is before, we can use this.
So you're making that motion?
Are we keeping the meeting on the twenty, we're moving the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth?
The twenty-fourth is gonna become the twenty-seventh, and the ninth will become-
Okay, and I'll second that.
So the ninth is gonna be at six o'clock?
The ninth will become the eighth at six o'clock. Because remember, we don't do Wednesday meetings on the ninth.
That's right, alright, July eighth, alright. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
John, I appreciate your time and effort on this.
Sure.
I appreciate everybody that's sitting up here and your work and your conversations. I think we have a lot of thinking and talking to do with other agencies as we move forward. But I'd like to open this up for the good of Brimfield Township, which will be to our board and department, and its community.
Just don't forget, we gotta create some kind of permanent streams.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second. Thank you all for coming.
Roll call.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. We adjourned at nine forty-four A M.